First session of the work session tonight is our legislative priorities. Thank you Brady and Monique for joining us tonight. I can show that we've got the representation from ICA, or ICEA, excuse me. And with that, we've got two attachments. We've got the 2018 legislative resolutions that came from IASB. We've also got the priorities that were established last year. And so I think that it comes up to what we want to see as our legislative priorities for the next cycle. And I think Paul, you mentioned a couple of things last week when you talked about this briefly. Do you want to start? That would be, that would be fine. Am I putting you on the spot? You said something, money, funding, funding, something like that.
I said that.
So JP, sorry.
I like the four of them because I don't think they've been accomplished yet. So, go ahead.
You know, I mean, that's the big thing. I mean, these four that are here, I guess the only thing I would add at this point is state of code is any attempt to do any vouchers. I think vouchers are, and especially with this, there's not many smart about the way they do stuff. I think vouchers would be a disaster for every district, for certain districts particularly, if say they just run with it and anybody's exgrained to do whatever they want to do. Essentially, I think there's some ideas that we thought about there last, last session. But then, other than, that's the only thing I would add to these, you know, that we have adequate timely state aid, extend the save tax, supporting LL students, which is another funding piece, and then obviously preschool, which is really important, and also take the funding.
Question for Brady and Monique.
Yeah.
Do you feel like that they have a priority around teacher education or something supporting?
Yeah, our top one is restoration of chapter 20.
Got it.
I mean, you know, that's, it just is, the anxiety that that's created for staff is palpable, as you know. So, you know, that has been, since the House file passed, has been the top priority for us. So, and the board at the time was fantastic, you know, in terms of, you know, we were able to negotiate quickly. We got to figure out how the board issued a statement at the following meeting, supporting, you know, the maintenance of the law as is. It was, we got in our, you know, right, right course, it was passed and changed. So, you know, I know those are the priorities of this board as well, to, you know, protect its workers. So, you know, we appreciate that, you know, that sentiment out there. But that's the only one that, you know, for us, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's a biggie. Because for us, in the fall, you know, things start to happen.
Yeah.
And the level of anxiety that's out there is, is, it's real, it's palpable. The questions that Monique, I know, would second this, that you get from people. Because they're not fully understanding what's going on, you know, with the changes, because we'll just start the process. So, you know, we feel very fortunate, you know, not every group gets invited to be at a table like this, so we really appreciate it. Not every, you know, group has a relationship like we do with Steve and Chase and, you know, from the past and going forward. So, you know, it would be very good. There's some things I think that we can do that some other districts are doing that will help, you know, with this process. But that's a biggie. And I would second it as well, and I'll let Monique talk, but JP is right. The vouchers, you know, pending what happens with the elections in November, we're very concerned about vouchers, ESA expansion, you know, cap on school tuition increases, things like that. Any privatization scheme, that's going to be, that's, that's a high priority, you know, a high area of great concern for us. We really appreciate you guys all went in March, right, and lobbied. And this was one of your central messages, those meetings we were able to go, best in public education. You know, I think the Register had a great article, $500 million over the last 10 years. It's gone to under 50,000 students. When you serve 500,000 students in your public schools, that's a massive amount of money, you know, under the guise of choice. So, any expansion of that is stealing from the public education. So, that, I would second that, you know, in looking at the floor of adding, of course, for us, chapter 20, and then also, I think, the concern about privatization schemes, vouchers, and things like that.
Steve, remind me how many we can submit as priorities?
We can submit to them, as many as you want. Essentially, what we need from you are the categories. That's all they need at this point in time. They aggregate those from across the state. And if you look at our brochure, we work to craft the language in that, which is the language that we use when we're lobbying locally and when we're in Des Moines. So, really, what we need from you are those categories. And then we'll work to craft the actual language that sits underneath those as we put ours together and get ready to go to Des Moines and.
I think it was a really strong statement, if we, as a district, as a board, said we want to see chapter 20.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think, coming from a school board, I think that would be a really, yeah.
I completely support it.
I think, yeah, we'd appreciate that. Maybe, so let's, so I'll just say two quick things here. One is, if people really care about chapter 20 and anything in here, then they should probably do whatever they can in areas around us to get Democrats elected, because it ain't changing if that doesn't happen, period. The second thing is, what are some other districts doing tonight? Let's just say it doesn't go that way. Let's just say things stay the same or get worse. So, what are some other districts doing in regards to their teacher contracts that we might think about? Yeah, there, there's a couple of things you saw as people, you know, of course, negotiated last year during the cycle is, you know, the duration of the, of the contract and the maintenance of permissive items within, you know, your contract were a couple of things that you saw. Because of course, you know, there are things that are prohibited. So, that just, you know, by statute, we have to remove those, and everyone's fully aware of those. The thing that districts are starting to pick up on now is they're, they're taking their existing contracts that were negotiated with their units, like us, our local unit, and they're extending the duration out through an umbrella of understanding. And that allows you then to remain the negotiating unit and group without having to do a recertification vote, which creates a lot of uncertainty and anxiety for folks. And then you sort of stipulate, West Des Moines, Southeast Polk, ADM, Carlisle are some districts, sort of around the Des Moines area is what we're hearing. They're, they're doing that, and then you have the ability to say, okay, we are going to open wages every year. You're going to do, everyone gets one permissive topic every other year, however they're doing it. Districts are doing it differently, but it's sending a message, I think, to, you know, the employee groups of, you know, we value, we get the change and hardship and uncertainty and anxiety, and, you know, we're willing to make that commitment, extend out the duration of the contract. You can do it to five years, is what the law says. And so, you know, for us, it wouldn't be the full five, because we're in an existing contract. But, so it's sort of an interesting approach. Purb, the Public Employee Relations Board, has vetted that through those districts and is, and is good with it. So, it's still, what it does is sort of takes you back to the, a little bit of the context that you had before, which is then you're negotiating your permissive topics and going through. The law actually still changes. I mean, there's no carbonation, you know, there are some things that still remain. That's why we're about to full restoration. But I think, from what we're hearing, that really has, has been a big move that just, just started, but I think it's been really broad smoking, and that's, that's something to talk about more here.
This is the win-win for both sides, because it is kind of deep in the spirit of the contract between the two negotiated parties and not necessarily having the state kind of dictate things also. So, I appreciated that part of the process, that a few of the districts have gone through it, just to say, this is kind of what we're, what we're looking for in terms of having both parties decide on something, but in an interview, being able to.
Yeah, and it's just this summer. We haven't even had a chance to sit down and work through or talk about it. I mean, it's just been, you know, I just know it from our regional director. So, but for us, it's, I think that could do a lot of really good things. So. So, you know, you said that the chapter 20 stuff is worrying teachers, and I know you said it's palpable. Yeah. I think that's pretty hard for people in our position to know what exactly that means. Yeah. How worried people are. I mean, I know, because I was there, but, but maybe you could help the board understand, like, how worried people are, what they are thinking, what some of the misunderstandings might be. One of the interesting things for us, you know, and we work with all of you frequently, we, I think we have a good sense that we've been working on this, you know, for a while, and then we have, you know, I'd say like a model collaborative relationship of any district in terms of, you know, your teachers association, your school board, your administrative team, you know, all working together. But our, we know that, but a lot of our folks don't know that. You know, and again, I think, Monique, it was you that shared with me, you know, as contracts were getting issued this summer, we didn't, you know, they came, not historically late, just a little bit later. And people were going, they were freaking out. They were like, also.
So, we don't have contracts.
We don't even get a contract anymore? This is how this works after, after the law? Like, that's just like, it's all gone? I mean, it's that level of freakout. Do I need to retire? Is leave totally going to be gone? What's going to happen to IFRS, even though I know that's not negotiated?
And insurance.
You know, but insurance and all those things, they just is really, has created, you know, just a level of uncertainty. I, you know, I think last winter and spring, we saw it with the other employers. It's just this thing, people, we haven't gone through this. You know, for 40 years, we had a process, you know, that we utilized, and so.
Well, you do have some stories from other places in Iowa where things have went very poorly, right? And where the people have a legitimate fear with some of that, not to discount the fear of any of our folks, but I think they hear those stories and then wonder, what's that mean for me?
Well, I think they see it in the context of labor unrest all over the country, and there are other places that don't treat their educators as, as well as we do, even though we're struggling with it. And I think they see some of that, too. I know I've heard that from folks, and they watch in West Virginia, and Arizona, and Oklahoma, and I think there's just a, use the word palpable, I think there's a palpable fear of, is it us versus them? And so every time something, every time there's a bump in the road, it suddenly becomes a major obstacle.
Yep, yeah, exactly.
And the recertification, that being a new process, and nobody knows what that is, and we have, and the ramifications of all of that, and just the unknown is, like you said, becomes a huge issue to start the school year, but wait, this is now in my mind, and so focusing on setting up the classroom and figuring out the kids' recertification contracts, is that going away? Do I still have my leave? All of those pieces of just helping people to breathe, and knowing that there is a process, there is collaboration, but if you're not at the table, you don't necessarily know that, so.
Is there anything we can do to help alleviate some of that anxiety and concern? Do you want to help try to get the message out, or?
Yeah, I think some of the things that we'll talk to, you know, to Chase and to all of you are, you know, things like what those other districts are doing.
Yeah.
You know, extending duration so that you can go back to a more, you know, sort of known process. That's the thing, I think your negotiating teams know what, you know, happens. And they know, some of you have been on negotiating teams, right? And so you know that, like, okay, there's an intense process, and you're sort of prepared for it, and, and you're ready for it. And, you know, our team will be ready, and I know the district team will be ready for that process, and some of them are very good, can give and take. But I think the thing that has changed, you know, some of the recertification and stuff like that, is it's broadened out. See, a lot of people just don't know what this is all about, and so, you know, very concerned. So, so the answer to this question is, yes, there are things, you know, that we'll, we'll talk with Steve, Chase, and.
And I have some ideas as well, because I think that associated with this is really just a message from superintendent, administration from the board, how we value our employees. At the end of the day, this is about creating a culture of value for our employees, and that we need to make sure that we are expressing that every day, that regardless of what they do in Des Moines, we're going to take care of our folks here in Iowa City. And so I think that we want to make sure that we have that message out there, and that our employees feel valued, they feel supported, they feel like that we are going to take care of them. And I, I hope that's something we strive to do a lot over the next year. And while this is important, I don't want them to be tied together, because I definitely don't want the message to be, well, we only support you through collective bargaining. No, no, no. As a school district, we support our employees regardless of some of those other factors. And so I think that's one of the things we, we need to work on, and we can want to do as well, is to send those strong messages and figure out different ways to do it.
So, the training day that the teachers have before they come back, the president usually does a recording message, and so that would be a good time to make that message.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's it.
So I think we're all pretty aligned on the six that we've discussed, so I think you've got that.
We can get that submitted to ISB. We can start putting together some draft paragraphs for you to review, and then we'll be ready to roll by the time the legislative session starts.
Or we'll do the same. That's pretty easy.
The D and G kind of, in the past, has worked through this.
Yeah, we'll get them a draft, and then they'll look through it, they'll do some wordsmithing on it. We really like to have it ready to go by the beginning of December, which is when we start interacting with legislators in that pre-session dialogue. So we like to have the brochure ready to go so we can get that out.
And do we have a deadline though for ISB?
Yeah, ISB, again, that's a pretty simple process. We know what the six are, we submit them.
You had a resolution on both. I mean, you had existing language.
Yeah, it's pretty easy for us.
You made it chapter 20, you had a resolution, you had my smart child funding schools and I, you know, doing vouchers, so you should have some language that you can. Which, those, I agree, I mean, I think, you know, those are, the board statements like that, when you're working with your administrative teams, your teachers, it means a lot, you know, it does. That's good to know. And Steve, I probably know the answer to this, but since chapter 20 went away, I know there's some schools that are probably super excited about that, but I, but the truth is, you know, your removal mechanism, that kind of makes it easy for both sides, like you both have some things to depend upon. So is there any, do you have any sense at ISB, is there some, some deeper thinking on this, or some like, ah, you know, they threw the baby out with the back door? I just don't know if there's, I know in the past, they probably, I would know what they would think, but now that it's gone, I wonder if there's any.
I would say it's more wait and see.
Okay.
Part of it was, at the beginning, was to see what was happening, what the court was saying about it, what the purb was saying about it, to see what the reaction was. I think when we looked at the, the work done in the state, it was literally about a third, a third, and a third. A third did nothing, right? Then a third kind of kept things the way they were, and then a third peeled everything back. And, and so I think ISB looked at that and said, there's no clear-cut direction from the boards in the state, so let's kind of wait and see what happens. So, and I, I know it probably isn't a third, a third, a third from a population representation standpoint, that's just from the number of districts.
Okay. So, two-thirds were at the extremes, and then. Their teachers running to.
Right. So we were one of the, Brady pointed this out before, right? We were one of the few districts, we got the, the word that this was happening, and we immediately, just for an historical perspective of me, I remember calling those guys and saying, you need food tonight? Because normally, your opening session is you come in, you exchange proposals, you talk a little bit, and you go home. And I said, bring food, because we're going to be here all night. Because we have to get it done, because we thought the legislation was moving fast enough that we might not even be able to get it done.
Just to get our votes in.
There were, there were other districts that knew that was the case, and immediately said, cancel our opening, because then it will happen to us and our hand will be forced. So.
Other entities in town.
Oh, exactly.
I was avoiding that. I was just going with the other.
But there were other entities, right?
So, so you really had a, a pretty varied reaction to it, and ours, ours was, we don't know what it's going to look like. We are far better off using today's rules than tomorrow's unknown rules, so let's move forward and get this done, and then when the waves subside and we see where things level out, then we'll have a better idea what to do next. So that was our, that was our intention. The board at the time was super cooperative. We had to have a session, an unplanned session, because we thought we had to have it done by Monday, because we thought they were going to act on Tuesday morning, so we had to have a Monday night board session in order to ratify, so we could get that done. And that, that all came together, literally over a course of four days. So it worked very well.
Yeah.
And, and the good news was, I think it worked so well, because we already had a strong relationship with the association. So when we said, all night, let's get it done, we were able to get that done.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We're not looking to pull another all night, necessarily.
I prefer not to either, though. Well, that was an awfully stressful one, because the final was at the end of the night. We didn't have a choice, so.
Exactly, yeah, no, that's right. No, it was a very, in the context, very.
I have thoughts on that, but then I actually do have a couple of thoughts on language on some of the other stuff, that I at least love to throw out there. You know, gutting collective bargaining is supposed to be a very employer-friendly thing, not an employee-friendly thing. And I will tell you, having sat at the other side of the table this spring with the other groups, it was not friendly from my perspective. Like, it was very uncomfortable, and there was a lot of unknowns, and it was very easy to get upset with the people at the other side of the table and wanting to say, screw it, I'm out of here, right? And that's not productive. And I will tell you that it is not friendly for the employer unless the employer has a very specific agenda, which it don't feel that we do here. So it's not globally a great thing for all employers. It was very uncomfortable for me as an individual, and I think the whole team felt just kind of weird. And it was my first time, so I can't really compare it to it, but talking with some of the other folks that were sitting around the room, they're like, it's, it's different. It's weird.
Yeah.
And not very comfortable. So I think, you know, change is not comfortable, but I don't think it was, it changed in the right direction either. I don't think it was, oh, we'll work out the bumps, and then it's still good. I think it was uncomfortable because it's not good.
And there was always the fear that we could pull the permissives from the contract, because we can't.
Right.
Our goal was to not.
Soon as I got tired enough about talking about it.
But that's always hanging in the back of the room, is that we can just pull it.
Absolutely, yeah, exactly.
But anyway, some of the language on, which kind of goes to our current ones, just the language that is in the ISB thing that they sent us. The one line stood out to me, the do not repurpose existing funds is an important thing, because I think we've kind of had that. They're like, oh, here's some money for this, and they've taken it out of, like, teacher leadership, or they've, you know, taken money from somewhere and say, here's all this new money you're getting, and they've taken it from somewhere else. I don't know how you craft that into your message, but that was a piece that stood out to me. And then as far as the preschool stuff, I like their take on it of increasing the waiting to be full-time instead of half-time, potentially have some of those full-day types of programming for preschool. I think that would make a huge difference in the number of kids that would be able to access it if it was a full-day thing. I mean, I think that was, got that, some of the information as to why kids use outside preschools, because they can't have a wraparound program or full day or something, and I think that is a great piece to.
Both, I think both of those issues are really salient, and one of the ones that we worry about is that our, our TLC funding will suddenly move from a categorical fund to a general fund, and that if that happens, that they may literally take off any requirement for what you spend those dollars on. We know that'll be a struggle if that happens. We've talked about that at length.
Yeah, there have been proposals legislative, they're not down very far, but they've.
And we're, we always worry about that, because once it's come up once, we know that it's likely to come up again. And they, sometimes they send out those trial balloons, so they can figure out, okay, how do I need to modify it to get it further next time, and further the next time. So we're, we've been very, very careful watching that. And then the pre-K piece, we know that absent universal pre-K that provides us the opportunity to pick kids up, drop them off, and keep them all day, working parents have a very difficult time participating in half-day programs. We just, that's the reality of the situation, and until the state decides to make that kind of commitment, we will always struggle to serve more than a small percentage of the students in the district. We just, we can't, we can't meet that need that they have, and the state really needs to step up. Just one soapbox moment, you know, the Perry preschool project shows there's a seven-to-one return for each dollar you spend, you get $7 back inside the system. Over the course of the first quarter of a child's life until they're age 25, that returns about $13 to one. So it's the best investment you can make in public education.
I actually think some of that language, you just said it would be good, is part of our summary of that.
Our legislators have heard that a few times.
That's good. So we've got six priorities, you've got them, you'll craft some language, we'll get a chance to review it at D and G, it sounds like, and.
Except four are done, we'll work on the other two, we'll get them wordsmithed, and then we'll get them back to you.
Good. Anything else on this one? Brady and Monique, thank you so much for coming and joining me and giving your thoughts and insights on this.
Yep, very soon.
Okay, next up, our attendancy development work. We've got an item that we're going to, I think, include in all these work sessions around just generic equity initiatives. And what this is, is a reflection, it came from a conversation we had last week, JP with Cersei, that I think in the discussion that you had with the Equity Committee, and maybe you can provide some context there, but it's just an overt recognition that there are other things that we need to be pursuing in the district to create change in our culture that will fully support and sustain any kind of boundary moves or pairings that we do. There's things like implicit bias training that we need to make sure that we have in place. There's programming, I know there's a goal to extend Adam throughout the district, and many other things. And so, and we've said this all along, and I think we can just, as a board, that if all we do is move kids and don't address any of these other cultural components, that we won't be as successful, we will not create sustainable change that we're after. And so I think this is an idea of trying to get some traction on some of these other initiatives, and making sure that we've got stuff happening concurrently, so that when we start making boundary changes, repairing schools, we're ready and prepared and, you know, don't have unintended consequences. So I'm starting it. JP, please, you attended Equity Committee, and you've got insights for that discussion, and I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that's the main, that for this work, we have to do a lot of work on our culture. And, and that work can't, we probably, I mean, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we probably just need more of it. And that's money piece. And that, that's the thing about some of this, you know, it's, we can, at this point, say, oh, it's fairly cost-neutral to change boundaries, it's fairly cost-neutral to pair schools, and maybe there's even some operational efficiency there. But the training piece, I think, is really, really critical. And, and identifying maybe, you know, as we sort of move forward with making some of these structural changes, then it might be identifying kind of some hotspots where we need to really get in and do some work. And it's work, it's work with our staff, but it's work with our community. I think the speaker tonight had, Mary Kate had a good point, like, there's lots of people who just aren't aware, and I think, you know, that's kind of my feedback, too, from, I think I've done three, maybe three of these presentations now, where I don't know that everybody, I think the people who are paying attention are aware, but I think for a lot of people, they're not aware. If you don't go to a school with a photographer, oh, like, you have no clue what that experience is like. And, and that helps set up a lot, reinforce people's biases about parts of town. I mean, the fact that I brought up, I don't want any Realtor to say, you know, you can't buy a house in this part of town, and at every meeting, people are like, people say that? And to me, I thought it was sort of one of these, like, oh, yeah, people say that, but I lived in a part of town where it's talked about, you know, and tried to sell a house in that part of town. So, so I've experienced that. But I think to a lot of people in our community, and maybe because we do live in these bubbles, they're just unaware of the experience of people who may live a mile away from them. And because they're unaware of it, they create these assumptions that are just erroneous and harmful and involve a lot of biases. So, so that's kind of what I'm coming away with is, you know, because we've done boundary changes in the past, and we go to boundary changes, and I think the community's, well, it's just another boundary change, and in their head, it's like, until the next boundary change. And there's not, not a lot of this other work that's going on to a great enough degree for these things to be sustainable. And maybe that's part of why these things have faded in the past, is, you know, we do some education at the board table about equity and how important it is, and then those of us who hear from teachers and parents who feel like they feel more urgent about some of the changes, that becomes very apparent. But then that all goes away, because maybe we haven't done the work in the other parts of the community to help folks understand, you know, we live in a, in an inequitable, segregated community. I think those things are really shocking to a lot of people, that we actually live in a segregated community. I think people associate that with the South and the civil rights movement, and they're not reflective to say, no, the People's Republic of Johnson County is one of the most segregated communities in our state, and follows the trend of a lot of college towns tend to be the most segregated communities in our country. And I think that's just news to people like, oh, I live in a segregated area. I didn't think about that. So I think the getting out to this and doing the why piece of this, but, you know, that was feedback I got from, from the Equity Committee is more like, just because you move the pieces around doesn't change the culture. And if you don't change the culture, you may be harming children more because you're sending them to a place that has real deep biases about them, and then we'll treat them in ways that reflect those, and then those kids end up, you know.
Things that are gained within a little school, in a way.
And so I think.
And targeted.
And targeted.
Because that's, I mean, we see that somewhat now.
We do.
Where we have heard and we see emails where those kids, and there's things listed in there that it comes from a place of bias.
I mean, if you are a kid from a Kirkwood neighborhood who drives through really expensive neighborhoods to go to Liberty, everybody in Liberty knows who you are, you know they know who you are, and that automatically sets up this, those are those kids. And that's, you know, and it's not like our teenagers are any better, maybe they're a little better than our adults, but the fact is, we all have these implicit biases. And so then you set up this us versus them right away with kids, you know? And we haven't done enough on the front end with, and I'm enthusiastic, we're optimistic, I should say, because I think I've heard a lot of really good, really good anecdotal evidence about the implicit bias training. I've heard a lot of individuals say, I had an aha moment, I didn't realize, I thought I was doing the right thing, I thought I was doing the best thing for these kids, and then realizing, wow, no, I was actually harming the structure in my classroom, and I didn't know it. And I think our climate survey data shows that. You know, it shows that our kids are having a way different experience than our teachers intend them to have. And so, so that's kind of where I'm at with this. But at the same time, we have to find a balance between this real urgency, you know, that if we continue the status quo, we've already got kids who are suffering both in environments that aren't always smooth running, and kids that are suffering because they don't see diversity. And that injures them in a way that you can't really make it up. You know, you can't say, you can't say, I have the experience of going into diverse schools if you haven't. And it doesn't just, you know, when I was on the campaign trail, I heard somebody say, ah, they'll deal with that at junior high. We don't got to worry about that in elementary school. And it's like, you really don't understand how this works, kids, development, socialization. And that person, or people who say, you know, I bought my house here so I don't have to be around poor people, and I don't want my kids to go to school with them. And I just, as a public education system, to me, that's, that's the antithesis of, that's why we have private schools. So you can choose to have, you know, and people go to private schools for lots of other reasons, but that's one of the things that's out there. You can afford to separate yourself if that's what you want to do. I think as a public education institution, we have a responsibility to say, but that's not the best way that it's done. This is public education, which means we're an agent for change. So that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, I think we need to see, we need to, we need to make some urgent moves. You know, I think, I think we can do some things with building blocks and pairing that frankly is exciting. Building blocks, I think, if we make some tweaks to 2019 and say, you know, we're committed to this, so we can, we know we can move a couple of areas that will have an impact. And then with pairing, you know, as we start to engage our, I think one of the things we're going to have to do with pairing is get up to the staff, start with ICEA right away, and building principles and say, how do we start this process? I mean, I was just quickly looking through this, and we do have a great opportunity this coming school year for Man and Lincoln to come together as a staff, and what would that look like? I mean, there's some opportunities, whether those two schools compare or not, it provides us a platform to say, what does it look like when two staffs come together, when two administrators come together? When, you know, if you're a building administrator, it's, I know we're getting better at sort of aligning everybody to our goals, but that's your ship, and your charge your ship. And when you have two captains come together, what does that look like? So I think we're going to, you know, we really have to do some of that work so that when we go and make these changes, they can be sustainable and they can last. Some, Grady mentioned, could we look at districts that have done this? Could we go visit them and say, go to Madison? Or, you know, the suggestion was, maybe even districts that have done it more recently, so we can say, okay, what was your experience like? What were the roadblocks you ran into? What are the good things? Kind of like the P B I asking with the Lincoln, you know, if we could identify some districts that have gone through this process and send some folks there so we can learn from what they have done? Because I'm excited about doing the work and finding this balance for your urgency. The implicit bias training, that's going to happen anyway. And I think the more we can ramp that up, the more we can hold people accountable to it, to say, say, if it's in your C SIP, did it happen? What was the result? I believe that the board, we should go through implicit bias training, or some, we're not going to do 10 hours probably, but if we could do some version of it that, well, look, we spent a lot of time in these work sessions, and if that's what it takes, then we do it. But I think we need to do it. I think we need to say, if this is what we're asking our teachers to do, let's hold the mirror up to ourselves first and say, what are my biases that I have, and what is that mean?
It's intentionality, that being very, very specific about the things we're aiming for and having a plan in place and doing it, and what is making happen for doing it. So whether it's implicit bias training or some of the other things, I love the idea of this industry, but I want to see, I want to see plans around the things that we're going to be doing around the culture of change. So I don't know what kind of plans we have for implicit bias training. It'd be interesting to see what schools have planned.
Sure.
And I agree completely that the board should participate. In fact, we even said, one of our own development goals would be implicit bias training. We should schedule that. We should get on our calendars and carve out the time and make it happen.
It'd be nice to, so we've been doing it for three years now, so it'd be nice for us to be able to share with you the journey so far and what we see coming next.
Yes.
I think it would be good not only to have us, but to get some building administrators in here, to get some of our teaching staff in here who have gone through it, who could share some of that process with you, to see kind of the slices over time each year as we've gone through it, give you some contextualization for it, so you know what it looks and feels like in a building.
Well, then it helps also see what we need to go next. I would love to have that overview in the work session.
We can definitely put that together.
Whenever you think we could be prepared for that.
I just figured it out, you know, what they did at West with the Harvard, the walkthrough. I think, that sounds like that was really great. I think getting that and our other secondary, you know, maybe elementary too, I don't know how that works with other folks, but from what I heard, that was a really great exercise that had a lot of benefit. And so, and because they're walking through with an equity lens, really helped.
Right.
Because, you know, when you're teaching and you're in your classroom, you don't, you can't possibly see that from up here. I mean, you're just in, and so sometimes we need folks to come in and who look to point out things, oh, that's, okay, that's why that kid might have felt that way.
And it's a different, we do the PD, we do the training, so you have that opportunity to interact with your peers. You have the opportunity to interact with the external trainers, and there's certainly a growth opportunity that goes along with that. But the walkthrough is more of the authentic, job embedded, hey, you learned this, what does it look like? So not just, here's the training that I'm going through, but when it's actually deployed, do I see a result?
Yeah.
I think we could, we could put together a pretty comprehensive list, and then you may have to help us pare it down so that we can do it in some reasonable chunks, so that we're not consuming entire work sessions with it. But we'll get kind of a catalog of the things that we think you might want to know about, and you can help us set some priorities for that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I was just smiling while JP was talking because I felt like you had sat in and listened to the presentation that Lori and I did last night, because virtually everything you just said has concerns in misinformation and just the assumptions that people in our community have. Like, we addressed a lot of those topics within that presentation. Not so much that they were coming back with certain assumptions, but it was, here's something you're going to hear, here's why that's not true. Right? We kind of tagged it that way. But even to the point where some questions came back, because I think one of the slides talks about our current initiatives and things we have in place. We talked about Avid and RAM, and I think it was, they talked about the Sams, and I think the question came in, you know, what is a Sam's role? And, you know, I did a terrible job explaining it, but I, you know, because it is different probably wherever you're at, I said in some cases, you know, discipline is part of that role. And the question came back, you know, where's the training for that type of discipline or de-escalation or things like that? And so the training piece came in forms of questions from the audience too. So that as a side-by-side along with the other work, I think is in people's mind, even at the joint entities, the, what are you going to bring in more teachers and administrators? Color came up, right? Like, there was stuff, I love what you're doing with boundaries and parent schools, but also this stuff needs to happen. So it's out there, I think, coming from a lot of different directions, but it is a simultaneous kind of thing, which is, you know, ambitious to try and get it all done. But I think everybody that's kind of talked to it is, they are not sustainable without each other.
But that's another, we've got a big goal in recruitment and retention, right? And kind of seeing, and maybe we're, we need to get the equity director position filled, obviously, but what's the pipeline? What's the strategy? What are the tactics to get the pipeline filled with talent that, and then what are we doing in the district from a culture perspective to make sure that talent stays? It all is a nice system there. So can you give us an update on the recruitment of the equity director?
Sure. So we're in the process of putting that timeline together. One of the things that we think is going to look a little different with this position than might, you might see with other central office positions is the role of that person in working on the initiatives that you just talked about. So we think that there's two things that we need to do. We think we need to reach out to specific members of the community. I think about Equity Advisory Committee, Center for Work Justice, and we've got a whole list of them, where we would like to get some questions out to them so that they can help us better understand what they think we should be looking for in the next person. So that's kind of a qualitative process where we'll get input from them on those characteristics that we need to have as part of the selection process. So we're putting that together right now. And then once we get into the selection process, we traditionally, at the building level, think of a principal, we'll include people from the PTO or other parents in there as part of that interview process. We're looking at this one as potentially needing a separate committee or a separate pool, so that normally, when a candidate comes in, they interview with a couple of different, usually three interview sets of interview questions that they go through, through different pools of people that they go to. We think there's a need for a fourth pool that would include more community members and some board members on that. So that, they would have four. Now, we talked to, as part of that this morning, and one of the things Chase says, and we're going to have to cut the questions down a little bit, we can't keep them all day. So how do we make sure that we keep them on their A game and actually give them the opportunity to talk to those four groups and get the input that we need, but make sure that we've got a separate committee that's, or a separate interview team that really represents our external community constituent groups for whom this is a really key crucial hire for us, so that they're then part of that decision-making process? So we're working on those two things right now. The other thing that we talked extensively about today is the job description. And, you know, we don't, we want to set someone up for success, so we don't want to make this so all-encompassing that the job can't be done. And so we've been talking about, what are some of the elements in there that Kingsley grew into, what might he have grown out of, and how do we then have that accurately reflected in the job description? So when we get it posted, recognizing, you know, we'll have some local interest in it too, we'll have some statewide interest in it too, we may have some nationwide interest in it too. We want to make sure that the job description is well-written so that whoever does apply for it really understands what it is that we think we need, but also what the community thinks that that position needs.
Yeah, I don't think we can understate how important that hire is. I mean, if we are going to be successful in all of the endeavors that we have, that piece is big. And I mean, it's easy to say that, but it's, I mean, you think about it, that really is going to help or hurt us being successful in all these endeavors. And so again, we can't understate how important that hire is.
And if I could jump in on that, one of the things that we talked about today was making sure that we don't rush the process. We want to make sure that we get that feedback. We, there were some concerns expressed at the table today about the difficulty of getting that good input in August. We're concerned about who's here, who's around, so we need to talk to some of those folks and make sure if we are going to reach out and try to seek that input, will we actually get the feedback that we need now? Can we get that? We think if we get ahold of folks and they know how important it is for us to get their input, but we don't want to jump to any conclusions before we've actually had that conversation with CWJ, Equity Committee, some of those folks. So we can put together a timeline that's going to make sure that it has the involvement that we know we need in order for it to be successful.
And I want to echo what Sean said, and also I think it's important that we review the past process because there were some concerns with the selection in the last process. And I would also put in there, looking at the structure of the position, just as far as how it fits into the corporation, and who it reports to, and who is, who gets information and everything that way. Because I personally feel that when your chief complaint receiver reports directly, no offense, to you, and then we get brought into the conversation further down the line when it goes to extremes, that there's opportunities for the board to know trends and things like that. So I think a discussion on the structure of the position in the corporation needs to be had as well.
The last thing is to say, the similarities from your presentation of what you said. The one thing, and maybe this will segue into our next section, but one of the things that we talked about was that balance and that sense of real urgency of something needing to be done, but really needing to be done right, or it will just completely fail. And then all attempts after that would be reinventing the wheel and keep perpetuating. So talking about balancing that urgency that I think we all really feel with not wanting to rush into a failed product, if you will, to then, that didn't work either, so why try the next time?
And the thing is, what's at stake is our students. If we screw up, we mess up student experience, and that's the pressure that I'm feeling that we have to get this right on all these levels.
But at the same time, knowing that the student experience right now for a lot of kids is not great. I mean, that's where the urgency comes from.
But we can make it worse.
Yeah, and it's definitely a juggling act that, you've kind of got to keep it ballsy for a very long time.
We talked about that today too, because we talked about the, kind of the breadth of opportunities that were available to us to remediate this in the classroom and in the buildings. And one of the concerns that was brought up was, it's not something that we can try and then a couple of years from now say, eh, that ain't working, let's go back, because the number of transition the kids go through, the potential physical modifications of facilities that we might go through, you know, so we talked about, we had a parallel conversation that mirrors what you just said about making sure that the decision that we make is one that we are really confident is going to move the work forward so that we don't find ourselves in two or three years then trying to undo.
So just to be clear, you're going to come back with that review of the implicit bias training, maybe some folks.
We're going to put together a, kind of an advert to Zebra, everything that we're doing, so that you may look at it and say, we like to see implicit bias training, what does it feel like, look like, sound like in a classroom? Let's hear from building principals, let's hear from teachers who've gone through this, what it might look like if we go through it? But then what other things are you doing out there that you may want to know about? You may look at some of them and say, we don't need a session on that, that or that, but we would like one on this. So we'd like to give you kind of that whole.
At the next work session or a couple of them now? Just let us know.
Yeah, let me see how quickly we can get that put together.
Just let us know, I'm hoping for next week, but just whenever it's appropriate. But I really would like this board to get an implicit bias training session on our calendars.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know how much time, what kind of time for that.
That I don't know, so I'm going to check on that.
Would you?
Yeah. Because I know, like you said, for us, it's something we do over the course of the year. We've got quite a few hours that are devoted to it. I don't think you want a 10-hour work session, even if you do start early. So what might it look like if we do it here? Is it a much like harder?
Yeah.
I don't know what that would look like, so probably need to have a conversation with Cersei about that.
Okay.
See where things are.
All right.
The Equity Committee did run us through some exercises at the Education Committee meeting, like, two years ago.
Yeah, I think it was about two years ago.
So maybe Cersei can run us through something like that again. And that took about an hour and a half or so.
You come with the idea on that. Thank you for that. Appreciate that conversation.
So maybe an Education Committee meeting would be the right place.
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to move us to the next item, which is this that you handed out.
So one of the things that I tried to do, and I will tell you right up front that I am 100% positive that I probably did not capture everything from that very wide-ranging conversation we had at the last work session, was those areas that you were interested in, in terms was those areas that you were interested in in terms of understanding the totality of the impact of pairing schools. I then tried to cluster it by like-type areas and then tried to identify people who could come in and speak to you about it. I also tried to be cognizant of things like you making the suggestion that we should ask for folks from, for instance, Twain and Longfellow to come talk to us after the school year starts to make sure that, that we get them on board. So what I did was I took those, you may look at them and say, there's no way we could do that in a meeting because that's not enough time. And I recognize that, I've already heard that. So I'll put that caveat right out front. But what I tried to do was look at and say, okay, 24th is tonight. Got an opportunity to talk about current and future pairings so that we can start to get data ready for you and prep administrators and teachers in those buildings. I threw out the 7th of August as a potential to hear from the folks on the education group. That is not a board meeting night, so I made it bigger. I was deliberate about that. I've already been told too big. But I'll just tell you, I, I put it on the 7th because that's not a regular scheduled board meeting night. So again, I tried to look for things that you brought up in our last conversations. School start and end times, pre-K, Title I, special ed, ELL, ELP, dropout prevention, PD, curriculum, library, secondary feeder patterns, BASP, 21st Century, summer programs. So those are all things that you shared in that conversation, not all at the same time, but over the course of the evening. Things that you were concerned about what it might look like if there was a pairing. You also talked about some building blocks.
So you're suggesting we cover all of that on the 7th?
I know. I've already been told that, I understand. I was trying to, trying to squeeze it all in so we could get in.
This is not the time of meeting you're describing.
I was trying to get it all in before the end, beginning of the school year. And like I said, that's already been pointed out to me. Building blocks, Lori and I had a chance to go back and forth a little bit, make sure that I had the right ones in here. Boston Way, Breckenridge, Lakewood, Lemmy. I called it the Lemmy Sliver. Paul just walked out. Oh, Paul's right here, sorry. Paul and I had a conversation about it, so I know where it's at now. So we can pull all of the data on that. Adam's out of the office, but he did respond to a text today and said, yes, we can definitely have all that data, no problem by the 7th. Disaggregated so that you've got it in all the slices.
And Forest View.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, this is the older version of it. Yes, Forest View, when Lori and I talked today. So I understand that may be too much. So let's just, just hold on to that for a second.
And I'm just, if you don't mind, so there is another Tuesday in July. Surprise, July 31st?
There is.
It's a Tuesday.
There is. Amy's out of the office on the 31st. I really think it's important that she was here to listen to that.
Me too.
Yeah, and I knew we had a couple of board members that were out too, so that's one of the reasons I steered away from it.
Just trying to space yourselves out.
Operations, things that you talked about, budget facilities, capacity current and future, playgrounds, transportation, nutrition, the number of transition kids go through, staffing, certified staff, the implications for TLC. Oops, I tried not to put too many acronyms in there. TLC, support staffing, and then supervision before, after school lunch, et cetera. Input, you talked about wanting to hear from principals and teachers and also BASP directors from schools that were affected. So I tried to do all of those first set of things before school starts on the 23rd and then do the staffing input right after school starts on the 28th. So probably overly ambitious. Like I said, that was already pointed out to me and I shared this with the admin team. But that, you, you asked for a lot of information at the last meeting. So as I started to flesh it out, it's a long list of things. And to be honest with you, they're a really good list of things. I think these are all things that we need to think about. So in that doing it right category, I think this fits into it. It's, there's just a lot of need for input and thinking from you.
Well, quite honestly, we're overly ambitious. I mean, that's, that's really what we're going for. And if we are going to balance urgency in doing it right, it's going to take piling a lot of stuff into a short timeframe. It's just what it's going to be. Is it just too much and we just can't get it done? It might play out that way. But I don't think you can, we can look at that and say, that's just too much. Let's just keep on pushing it out and pushing it out. Because then we're not balancing our sense of urgency with the amount of work we know it's going to take. So, I mean, I'm willing to give this a shot, you know, and get through as much of it as we can in the timeframe that we have.
It was pointed out to me that we could ask our team to make sure that brevity is, is part of the presentation process.
All these discussions, all these different people presenting on the 7th.
It was also pointed out to me after I sent this out that the 21st is also not a board meeting night. And we only have staffing on there. And so that could be an overflow for us. If we need to push things that we don't get to on the 7th, we could push some of them into the 14th. That's a regular board meeting, so maybe not go as deep. But maybe we could leapfrog over that. If there are things we don't get done on the 7th, we could potentially do those on the 21st. That would allow us to get through a lot of information, maybe not everything, before we hear from the teachers. But I think you as board members would be much better prepared when the teachers and the principals come in. And if there are things we don't get to, you can see that there's definitely room after the school year starts if we need to come back and revisit that.
Are any of those things on the 7th higher priority than others? I mean, just to ensure that we.
I didn't ask our team to prioritize those. If there are things that you definitely want to hear about, we could easily do that.
The building blocks stuff.
Yeah, I thought you would want to see the data for that. I'm not for sure.
I don't know about some of the rest. So I think the, I'm trying to think of which ones would potentially align with some of the staffing, which would be a better fit.
Yeah, no, I think so, the building blocks for sure. And then, and then I would even, you know, defer to staff to say, you know, what are the really key points we need to be aware of? Like Title I. Like, well, just be aware, we might, because it's funny. Oh, yeah, that's really important.
So it's not a big presentation? It could just be like an information sheet or something? I don't know.
I give an envision, like a slide per item, because I know that there's a lot of detail. So for example, for Title I, we would probably continue to get the same dollars, but you would need to know if that's an eligible, you know, when you use that district average right now, or above, you're eligible. I think it could be really quick.
We had talked about, can, can each of these folks that are on the right, can they give us one slide? Not 10-point font. I mean, one slide, follow the rules, 18-point font, get your bullets.
I think we should give it a shot.
If they write it up ahead of time, we can.
We can get it posted. And that's the benefit of doing it on the 7th. We can ask them to start working on it now, we can get it up.
One slide.
Per area.
If they could get it, we could read it and, and if we, heck, maybe we can even say, okay, that's good information, don't have questions.
Right.
It might not have to be here.
And then, we're not presenting, but we're answering questions that you may have about it?
Let's give it a shot.
I know.
Let's give it a shot.
We could also compile questions and try to take the questions, you know, a little different format, right? And out, disseminate those afterwards, you know? I think that's where we get off track with the questions.
Well, we, that's good. So strong facilitation, parking lot action, I don't know, he was moving. That's good. Have a stopwatch.
And we know operations will be tough on the 14th because that's after a board meeting.
I'm very good at that.
But the agenda's not.
Yeah, that's a light.
It's a light agenda meeting, so we're thinking we can do ops afterwards. And then we've got some overflow on the 21st. And then, we'd have a lot done. We'd have had a lot of opportunity to, to better understand where your concerns are. Staff would have had a better opportunity to share where some of their concerns are before you get.
I think it's good.
Principals and teachers in here.
I think it's good.
It's a little ambitious, but.
Let's do it.
As Sean said, I figured, hey, you know, if we're going to do it, let's do it.
So one more clarification as we go back to our team here. When they're getting ready to present, are we still, like last week, we came out of it thinking, what would this look like for the one pair? Are we just, are we thinking about for multiple pairs? Just be prepared. Because I, they could speak specific to, let's say, special education. What kind of programs are those two buildings right now? How they blend? Who says vision for where we're going with programming? So how do you want me to bring half the team here?
Because I think the pairing actually makes a difference on what the issue is.
It does. It does. And we had that conversation about, and so you see up there, you know, we put down for tonight's discussion was, are we just coming back with the Longfellow-Twain? And then are the other pairings for future discussions so that that serves as a template for us? Or do you want us to look at pairing in general? And what things should we be concerned about with starting times of pairings in general?
That would be too specific.
My thought would be that there's different answers for different pairings. So it's going to be really hard for them to answer the questions.
To be generic.
I, six pairs.
It's not a very useful conversation that is generic.
So I think.
It'd be pretty broad.
And, and this maybe follows our next conversation. We pick one or two and we say, these are the ones we want the information on. And we recognize that.
Sure.
We would be making some other decisions, not having all the information, but.
But I think we settled last week on Longfellow-Twain, is it for sure?
That, that was part of the conversation. And then we had a bunch of other ones that were just hanging out there. And I just wanted to make sure that we didn't neglect them if you wanted them as part of that.
I think it, you know, with the opportunities with Schimmick-Mann, especially with it going into construction discussions relatively soon, that that might be one we want to include as well.
Can I just ask, why, so why Schimmick-Mann just, and I'm only saying that because Lincoln and Mann are coming together with Schimmick. Their styles are going to be in the same building, tons of opportunities for PD and just getting to know each. So.
My, my, my only thing on that one, and, and, and yeah, the, the fact that they're coming together. But just logistically, the proximity and the ease of, of those two, to me, maybe that's.
No, I get with the.
How I look at it, as far as Lincoln's a little bit more difficult.
With the getting to, the logistics.
That, that way.
We also looked at, if you look at the pairs we put together, we tried to, remember I told you we kind of ranked ordered them under the new 1920 boundaries? What did they look like from socioeconomic status? And we tried to pair where we could, high and low geographically proximate, proximate schools. And Mann changes with the new one. So it's no longer a low FRL school.
Got it.
Schimmick is a low FRL school. And so we looked at that from, okay, this, what is this, what might this do from that standpoint? So that was.
My question about Forest View, potentially.
It would. And, but if we looked at, if we looked at a Schimmick-Mann combo, that wouldn't prevent us from looking at Forest View as a building block. It might wind up.
Because it's only like 70 kids or something, I think.
I guess that was going to be my point, was if we look at a few of those building blocks and where we're putting them, it would then inform, you know, maybe better balance. And it, and it could be very rough, right? Like, if we just move those kids there, then that makes a better pairing. But I think we kind of have to know that now, right? So we can make, so where we're going to go after.
The good news from that standpoint is with the exception of the Forest View building block, and that would obviously affect a Schimmick-Mann one, the other building blocks we're looking at might all be for future pairings. And so. But Longfellow-Twain, oh, Lakewood could be part of that too.
But the Forest View, just to fill you in, I had said, kind of like Paul had asked last time, if we could see the pairing with Lakewood and the pairing without Lakewood. And I had said, could we see a Schimmick-Mann pairing with Forest View and without Forest View? And what would the numbers be?
I think, I, I, I think this is a good start. This is more than I thought. And I like that. I think that's good that you guys have done that. And about a few areas that.
I guess I was not getting my full thought out either. I think as we look at some of those building blocks, it'd be looking at a pairing sticker. Right? If we look at the Boston Way neighborhood, it has the possibility to do something that then helps to delay the need to jump on a pairing. Right? In other cases, there's not just one little thing you can do that immediately delays the need for a pairing. So I think that's what I would look at is, the pairing is the quickest and best way for Longfellow-Twain. Then that rises to the top, assuming that you produce a few other things to, again, balance that sense of urgency at some of those other schools that are doing something potentially, even if it's just a, that's really.
Kirkwood's got renovations coming up. That could, this could inform that facility's stock. And, but that's not coming for, you know, starting to be done for a couple of years.
So I apologize, I was multitasking for a minute. And so where, where are we, in terms of, so we've got Longfellow-Twain and that's specific to it. Is there another specific pairing that?
We were talking Schimmick-Mann.
Okay. Is the next one, so to give the team, those are the two pairings that we're considering. So for all of these other topics, have those two.
To think about?
So then that way, when they come, when we bring folks in and when they put their slides together, they will look at those two.
The specific conditions in those two schools that we pay for.
Things that they would like to reconsider.
So we're all good with that? Longfellow-Twain, is that right?
You know, the only thing I, and not that we need to, you know, because I want to be methodical, but, you know, just seeing Lucas Wood on here and knowing how. You know, I guess, I guess I'd like to know what, so as we, if we think about timing, you know, what are the different factors for each of these pairings that, so like a Kirkwood, having the facilities coming up that might impact, you know, when we would implement something like this? And so what are the other factors with these other pairings to think about as far as logistics of implementation? As which one, you know, as far as an order pair? And which ones we could do more urgently and which ones that could wait a little while or would be beneficial to wait because we want more input?
And it may be one of those things where after we have a chance to go through and answer some of the questions for Longfellow-Twain, Schimmick-Mann, then you might look at it and say, oh, what would, might that mean for? I could see what Lucas Wood would look like in school start and end times, or whatever it is. So that might help us refine that conversation moving forward too. You might be able to see some of that.
I think we'll continue learning through this, right? I mean, and, yeah, so let's do, let's do a couple more.
The thought that's rattling around in my head is the, the stuff that rises to the top should be the schools that have the most need right now and have some of the lowest proficiencies, right? Like the, if, I know we can't just go down the list, all right, well, we'll address that school and that one and that one. But I think if there is a place where there's a choice, and we want those kids to need more help. Right? But it's difficult starting, if we know the proficiencies now at the schools, but with 2019 boundaries, they don't know what those numbers.
Sure.
It look like if his kids aren't doing, it makes it difficult. But I think as we move stepwise through the process and we get some feel for where kids have moved, literally moves the building blocks or, you know, families just change altogether, right? Couple of years.
And keep in mind, some of those, depending on what happens with the building blocks, some of our schools, you know, and we, I asked Tristan to put the maps up so that we have for visual reference. But you're not going to see a market change in the Hills population. You're not going to see a market change in the Alexander population, the, the wood population, just because of the nature of the wood, the compact nature of the neighborhood that it's in. So of the six pairings that are in here, we selected four of the schools that are in our tier one need category right now. So we were pretty deliberate about that, bringing those back to you. Because to Sean's point, we think that's where the sense of urgency is.
And then when we're talking building blocks next time, it feels to me like we're talking about making those adjustments for 2019.
It can. And when we talk about building blocks, what we've got listed here are neighborhoods that are, with the exception of one, are neighborhoods that are, that some would say, the kid's on the bus. So I think we want to be real cognizant of not having our building blocks just be, do you follow what I'm saying?
So we want some.
Want some building blocks that are.
Wolfy.
Affluent neighborhoods.
Not that far.
Just the same blocks of means. I, I, I think it looks a little targeted.
I hear you, yeah. And that's been very consistent feedback, that, you know, it's not about, you know, if, if people are disrupted, it's not only for people that are disrupted. But frequently, that is the case, where it's, it's the lower income folks that are barely running. And we want to make sure that's not.
So maybe we could also, you know, think of some other building blocks.
Yeah, do some brainstorming on that. And, and, you know, keep in mind, one of the things that we always struggle with is, although with some of the pairings, there are some efficiencies from a combination standpoint that may open up some more seats. So I think about a Schimmick-Mann and the significant economies of scale that we get from it that could certainly, probably, just anecdotally off the top of my head, without actually running the numbers, accommodate a move of a group as large as Forest View into that school. But for many of these others, if you're going to move them out, you're, we're in a zero-sum game because we don't have any empty seats. So pick one of those, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to move Breckenridge out from their 1920 assignment, that'll leave some seats behind. from their nineteen-twenty assignment, that'll leave some seats behind. You move them in, you're gonna have to displace in order to create seats at the table for them. So that might be part of our conversation is, okay, if we look at adding them, now if we're overcapacity, who are we looking at moving out?
I think that's where those two, that Lakewood and that Lemmy Sliver would.
Right.
Blising that part together.
That was what you proposed last time. If we're gonna move them and we gotta move somebody out, if we're gonna move somebody out, who might we move out, which then fits the category you were talking about, which we were talking about.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't know if we can identify some of those tonight or if we need some more time to identify those.
If you're looking to move, like, Boston Way out, like.
What's that?
I think part of it might be, it might be looking at where we're gonna move them. Then we can start looking at saying, if they're going here.
How many do we need to move out?
How many do we need to move out? And then we might be able to reach back into some of those building blocks we built earlier and say, "If we need one that's about this size, we have one that kind of is about that size," so we might be able to go back and do that.
I just, I just want to be real cognizant of the optics of it all along the process here, that.
Yeah, it's almost impossible for us to move someone in without moving someone out.
That's good. So that would be part of that pairing, I'm sorry, really about conversation.
And I think that'll be especially part of that, uh, we start looking at current and future capacity and saying, "Okay, what does this look like for the week with space?"
This is good. Thank you. I mean, this is a really great start.
So what I do need you to do, that, that is exactly what the, the comment I needed, "Great start." I know that either in conversations with community members, other people in the district, people coming to you, this isn't everything that we need to think about. Please send us, if you say, "Hey, what about, I don't see anything in there about something." Let us know so that we can get that on the docket. We can start prepping our team to get their slides together. So I posted it online so that if you want to steer people towards it, you can, you can send them out there so they can see it. And if they say, "I see this, that, or the other thing missing," please let us know.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
So we're set for agenda for the seventh. It's ambitious, one slide.
Yep.
We've got the two pairings up, so we've got the specific context.
Right. Then we'll run numbers for you, so we'll have some building block data.
Yeah.
I have an idea on time when you want to start.
On the seventh, um.
It's a non-meeting day.
Six would be my recommendation, since that's what we do generally. It's consistent with our names. Oh, I'd like to talk about Alexander, because I, I feel like that is an area that we haven't talked much about. So, um, and if, if we're not talking pairing, then what, what do we need to be talking about Alexander? And maybe that's another item we put somewhere.
Well, I think one thing to be cognizant of is what did we do last year that helped? You know, what we're, you know, because it's, it seemed to calm down a little bit. So what are we doing and are we gonna continue that? So, because we, we sent staff and we kind of called in the driver, and went in. So I, I guess I'd like to know if that helped and are we gonna continue that and then.
And, and they're telling us though that they, they would like their numbers to change also. So, and their numbers are going up with the twenty-nineteen boundaries, you know, in terms of the lowest.
Right, I know.
Well, only is that Lakewood.
Well, that's the thing. Lakewood is a big, so to me, I think, for those, where we can go in and do building blocks and just make adjustments planning, let's do that and see what happens, because that's, we can do that. Because Alexander's tough to pair, I mean, well, here, Hoover. But that, but that's still part, so Lakewood is a piece of that, and then what does the pairing look like? Because I think if teachers buy into, this is my big concern, is getting teacher buying. If teachers buy into this and they know in two years, that can carry you through, man, you know, that can get you through
Sure.
That rough start to know, okay, in a couple of years, this, and especially if we have some success, they're like, "Oh, over a month, I love to do this. It's working well."
I think the thing that, I mean, the title of this is the Attendance Area Master Plan. And we actually had an attendance area master plan that we worked on, uh, similar to the facility master plan. I mean, that gave people, I know my school is coming up here, and I can watch what's happening back here, see what's happening. So, I mean, if we could eventually get to something like that, that would be.
This is the master plan by a minute.
Yeah, exactly.
Where the master plan.
I would suggest we pick a plan, a word other than master plan, just because of the similarity to the facility master.
Development plan, tenancy development.
I, I, we can figure that out later.
Although I think master plan works because people know what it is. It's the master plan.
Uh, but I, I just know that Alexander, you know, if they say in the, "Hang on for two years."
Wow.
I, I think they're probably gonna be like.
No, I want to make changes.
Maybe something more.
No, I want to change it for twenty-nineteen, for sure. I think when we can move building blocks.
Just like the email we got from the Kirkwood parent.
Yep, I know. And it, well, and I don't ramp up now, August and September, you know, I'm sure there's always those.
Yep.
You know, beginning of the year, sort of what's happening. So we'll be hearing it more, I think. Are you right?
And, and a piece of that is, and, and again, we, we haven't talked about this much, but with Alexander, if we did think about doing the magnet option there, that would require many kids out, and maybe we would do that in twenty-nineteen.
And I did add that down at the bottom, so, um, I put alternative programming in there. I didn't assign a date to it, um, just because I didn't want to be presumptuous, but I did want to make sure there was a placeholder for it, so that it didn't go away.
Because there is capacity in Hoover, so.
Okay, anything else with a bit of the cause this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Hi.
Just press that for the seventh?
Yeah.